Ladies and gentlemen, I guess we're ready to start. Today is April 17th for the Pace City Council Meeting and the time is, on my watch, about straight up 6 o'clock. I would like to excuse Councilman Christensen, he's had some minor medical issues so he won't be able to be with us tonight. Hopefully Councilman Welton will be with us, but obviously he'll come a little late. I have asked Reverend Peterson to give us the opening prayer. Reverend?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Pleased that we can have a great time at this council meeting today. Please bless that this council meeting can go good and pleased that we can all have a great day and we thank thee that we could all be here today. And I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you Reverend. I've also asked Tanner Smith if he would come forward and lead us in the place.
Will the audience please rise? Read the pledge after me.
I am the allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Tanner. Okay, we'll move on to be the consent agenda. This is the approval of the April 3rd, 2019 city council meeting and work session, resolution of municipal water planning program, MWPP, annual report, the assignment of Creek Hall Development Agreement to Apple Homes LLC, an addendum to Spring Creek Town Home Development Agreement, and lastly, National Leagues of Cities Service Line Warranty Program contract. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. This calls for a roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Lyndon Hyatt.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Would like to go to see petitions, public forum. Anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda. Time limit is three minutes, so if you could keep your comments to that timeframe. So when you come up, please tell us who you are. Okay, not seeing anyone want to take advantage of the public forum. We'll move on to staff and council reports. Any of the staff that would like to come up and speak to us.
Mayor, council, public, we just have a couple things tonight. First, we did have a senior tournament today, which was fun. We had seventy-some odd players from all over the state. I think we had them from as far as Brooklyn City North and St. George. And it made me feel old, because some of you BYU fans might remember Matt Bellini.
Yeah.
Yeah, Matt Bellini was a senior then, so he's fifty years old, played in our tournament. I thought, holy cow. But anyway, the sun finally came out up there. We had a good event. People was really, really complimentary of the golf course, so thanks to Mark and Gregory, they do a great job. And then, we're trying to get going on the Harvey Park. As the sun comes out, it seems like it's been a rough spring, but him, so he's getting it back up there and we should get going on that. Other than that, it's just business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you Tracy.
Mayor, city council, members of the public. I'd like to take my time tonight to honor one of our officers, if you may. Last month at the Utah Chiefs of Police Association Annual Conference, Lieutenant Porter was honored as the, and selected as a Police Officer of the Year for 2019 for our department. So, I would like to just read his nomination letter if I can, and then we'll have him come up and, oh, I thought Doug Rose's hand over there. I thought I had a question already. "On August 14th, 2018, a domestic violence situation in another jurisdiction took a surprising and violent turn. An adult male, subject to have been arrested earlier, bailed out of Utah County Jail and eventually drove to the Spanish Fork Airport where he stole a private jet. This subject instructed a family member to turn on all the lights on the front of his home and leave for the night. The subject being a veteran pilot of commercial and private status proceeded to crash a several million dollar private jet in the home while his wife and stepdaughter are in the home. The plane crash caused significant damage to the home that the subject shared with his wife and family." "The crash and subsequent fire caused damage to vehicles and other homes. The pilot and the subject of investigation was killed. The subject's wife and daughter were successful in surviving the horrific ordeal. Lieutenant Porter was notified and responded to the chaotic scene. As a result of the unique situation, many federal and state agencies were involved along with local and national worldwide news organizations. I was out of town on vacation, thankfully, leaving Lieutenant Porter to command the scene as well as normal activities within the department. Lieutenant Porter seized control of the extremely chaotic and challenging scene along with the subsequent investigation. A domestic violence crime of this magnitude is extremely, extremely rare and extra precautions and investigation steps were needed to complete the investigation. Lieutenant Porter coordinated and directed numerous agencies, including many officers from several different law enforcement agencies, in a concise and professional manner. Upon my return to the scene the following day, I found that unfortunate incident investigated and the response to be complete and thoroughly be no doubt as to how the events unfolded. I received many compliments in regards to how well Lieutenant Porter handled the investigation as well as the way he handled the families involved in a compassionate and professional manner. I received praise from many of the federal, state, and local agencies involved regarding the coordination of efforts. As Chief of Police, I am thankful for officers such as Lieutenant Porter. Lieutenant Porter is not only a leader, but also an amazing mentor to the staff of the Pace and City Police Department. And the above situation is just one of the many incidents that Lieutenant Porter has overseen as a result of a professional, successful outcome." Lieutenant Porter was given an award at the banquet and we thought I came to come up and shake the hands of the council, the mayor, and maybe get the whole department up here for a picture if we might.
May I refer to the council?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm going to give an update, because we have all the people in the audience, so I want to take advantage of this opportunity. So, Pace City is knee-deep in the update to our general plan. So, we're looking at growth and development in Pace in over the next thirty years. So, the mayor and city council allocated funds last year in order to hire a team of consultants to help us put together land uses, dense cities, infrastructure plans for the growth of Pace. Over the next thirty years, we are anticipated to triple in size. So, it's a little hard to believe, but the pressure's coming from the north. And so, we're trying to be proactive and put together some plans for the future. And so, we've tried to get information out to the community to get involved in this process. And as an update, we actually have our next open house, which is going to be held on Thursday, April 25th. So, that's a week from tomorrow. It's going to be held in the banquet hall. And the focus is going to be on parks and recreation and transportation. So, if you have any interest with parks and recreation in the community moving forward or transportation facilities in the community, we would definitely love for you to come and participate in that open house and give us your thoughts and your ideas for the future of Pace. I know I've said it to the mayor and council, I know many of you will not be there that evening, but we'll give you an update in May. But we're just still striving to get a lot of input from the community on those specific topics at this time.
I make a plug real quick to that. Since we've got a lot of young people in the crowd here today, which is good, we're going to celebrate some athletic events it looks like. But whatever we decide, sometimes this looks like all boring stuff, and it is a little bit, but whatever we decide for this recreation and roads and parks is what you have to live with. If you plan on living in Pace or you just happen into Pace, the decisions are made today and a lot of times the youth are highly underrepresented when we go to those things. If you want a rec center, if you don't want a rec center, if you want a pool covered, if you don't, you should show up and let them hear what it is that you have to say because you'll be living in the shadows of those who made the decisions right now and you really need to hear your voice because there's a good chance you will be living, some of you will be living here for ten, twenty, forty years or more. So, we would love to have you all at these events.
Thank you.
Thank you Jill. It's quite a percolating event of doing those studies, so Daniel?
That segues to transportation regionally. I went to a workshop last week with UTA on service choices and really gathered community leaders or influencers or whatever we want to call them to discuss where we'd like to see UTA allocate their resources and the service choices that we find most beneficial for our communities. With that, there's a public open house for those that would like to attend. It's Tuesday, April 30th. That's Tuesday, April 30th, from 5:00 to 7:00 in Provo, at the Provo City Library, so 5:15, 11:00, or 12:00. That's open to the public as well. So, anyone here who has feedback to UTA with where they think UTA should be allocating their resources, whether it's more toward trains or buses or, you know, long regional bus trips versus concentrating more within denser areas of the city, new routes versus frequency routes, those kind of things. So, 5:00 to 7:00, and then again, Tuesday, April 30th.
Thank you Daniel. Chief?
Hi, Mayor, council. Just a couple of things to let you know, we've been working on with the Dry Creek Channel, clearing that out just in case of possible high water or flooding. Want to make sure that stream flows and doesn't have any issues. So, we had our first session where we asked the residents to come out on March 30th. I had pretty good turnout for a spring break and we ended up securing just one section, but we got them pretty thorough, really clean. And then this last Saturday, we had a big group do the rest of it down to 1130 South and we got part of that towards Walmart. But we had groups from all over the city come help participate and it was a good turnout and made a big difference on the stream. We had a couple areas where we really had a lot of debris pulled out and the crews are starting to haul that debris off right now as it was possible. We're trying to get it off the trail, but some of it's on the trail, along the side of the trail. So, thank the residents, they really did a fantastic job. So, we'll try and get the last little section done and be ready to go. Also, we have the Great Shakeout tomorrow, 10:15 a.m. So, we've had information sent out, we've given several thousand, it's amazing, we give them out every year, but I think people forget them or lose them or throw them away, so the green, yellow, red, and black colored cards. So, we're asking people to put the green cards in their windows so the block captains can come down and at least get a count of those that put the cards in their windows and then a count of those that didn't have anything or, you know, forgot, like I did last year. So, it happens. If people don't have cards, we have, we brought quite a few down here at the city office so people can still take them. And we'll send some information out again tonight and then we'll do the upper bridge communication at a one-day event occurs at 10:15. And we'll practice communications, what we're trying to determine coming from block captains all the way through up to our ELC to see how that works and see what kind of numbers we get. We're challenged in some areas of our communication with the radio system, we want to try to see how it works. Also, we had, normally don't talk about our calls, but we had an interesting one on West Mountain Saturday night as people have four-wheelers and side-by-sides and Jeeps and they just feel like they can go here and there and everywhere and no challenges, but people forget how steep West Mountain is. And this gentleman wasn't from the area. He and his friends brought their four-wheelers over and decided to ride up on the ravines and he made about a third of the way up and they start to realize as they're going up, most machines don't have the power to continue up and lost traction and the machine came over on top of him. So, we had to help get him extricated and out of there. Luckily, he had some minor injuries, but they're in hospital to make sure things are okay. But challenging it all because it's quite steep, trying to get that many people up there and haul people out, so a little difficult. Then the last thing is open burn, still goes till May 30th, can't come soon enough. So, we have a few challenges with people burning and we're trying to get the yard waste cleaned up. We always encourage our residents to take the green waste, anything like that from yards out to landfill for free, but we always have a few people that always want to try and burn leaves, which they don't burn, they smolder and smoke everybody out. Anyway, thank you.
Chief, thanks for all you do. Chief Bishop as well, thanks for all you do.
Speaking of the cleanup, we still have one more section of the channel and gotta work with Scott to get another date. I haven't had anybody reach out to me today and find out what we're going to do before all the water starts coming down. But it really looks good, it's cleaned up pretty well.
One question I had, Chief, had some folks ask me if we, years ago we had a siren. Is anything going to denote that time that we need to have those out?
We hadn't thought of using that siren, but I'll be glad to set it off.
At least up to you, I guess. But that was a question I had, and I didn't know the answer to.
Good idea, we'll do it.
I sent Travis over to a meeting with the county and he's still hoping he's going to make it back, but I'll give you the water update. We had a lot of rain yesterday and we've had a lot of rain, so we are not planning on turning down the secondary water system until we need it. I know Highline's trying to push it off too, but Highline was looking at May 1st, that's a week and a half away. We may get a little bit more rain this weekend, but the water, the lawns do not need water right now, so we're hoping to preserve that until we need it during the summer months. So, just on your snow tell side, we're at 157% of normal still at this date, which is phenomenal. The average for our area in Pace Canyon is 17.8 inches per year. We have 28 inches right now, so we're quite a bit over our precipitation rate and our snowpack is still 159% of normal. So, it's good news on the waterfront with the burn scars. We're hoping that it gets warm really slowly so the water comes down slowly. If it gets really hot and it starts coming down, there probably will be flooding statewide. There's just, there's a lot of water right now, but if we have moderate temperatures, you know, this next month, I think we should be good. I went to the water conference in St. George about a month ago and that's what they're predicting. The National Weather Service said if the weather's cooler than normal, which it has been so far, and it stays in that pattern, we shouldn't have a lot of flooding issues. But you never know the weather in Utah, if it turns off really hot, that's why we've tried to clean out this Dry Creek Channel. Highline was really great, they put the water into the Highline Canal while we cleaned that and worked with us there. So, we'll continue to work with them and when they turn the canal full-time for the summer, our PI system will be on. Any questions on water? Okay, the lawns look good, they're all green.
Mayor and council, I just want to thank you for your support, especially Brian. The Volunteer Day, I think, was quite successful. I thought it was so much fun, great idea. Want to take thanks also to Shauna, I mean Chris at Stadium Cinemas and I thought it was really, it was so much fun and it was just slick, it was quick, and so, thank you for all your help and I appreciate that. I just want to do a shout-out of our next event, which is our Pay It Forward Challenge. It's May 18th. I have taken this over since Sarah Webber is no longer with us, so I've added just a couple of new elements to it. So, Sarah has done as a Pay It Forward Wellness Challenge, that will stay the same. I have invited Pace Canyon Elementary Schools and Santaquin Elementary Schools also this year. And then also, you guys, everyone is welcome, it's not elementary, it's all, if you want to walk, run, race, it's just a fun event to go to. It only costs a dollar and so it's easy for families to sign their family up for it. The first thousand participants will receive a medal and a bottle of water and a granola bar, so that's great, great. And then the new element I'm adding this year is an actual Pay It Forward Challenge. So, we will have a tent and they will be, anyway, there'll be rules, you could say, going through the challenge. So, I have gift cards from different businesses in Santaquin and in Pace. I'm hoping for 200 gift cards, I'm not quite there yet, so I'm still, it's what I've been doing all day today, is talking to business owners. But my idea is, is you take the challenge, you walk down the little thing towards the tent and the challenge is, one, this gift card is not for you. Two, when you get your gift card to your business, you go to that business and then once you're right with the business, you're going to give that gift card to someone else who's already shopping at the business. So, the businesses are really, they think it's a great idea. I have a little over 100 gift cards so far. So, I thought, what a great idea for families to, first of all, learn about wellness and then taking the challenge if they want to as a family or as individuals to actually receive a gift and want to maybe keep it, but you're going to pay that forward and go to the business and depend on somebody else. So, I'm hoping it's successful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Janine. She really puts her heart and soul into the activity for Pace and so she does an awful lot for Pace and we're very, very appreciative of her energy.
I'm so sorry, we also have Arbor Day coming up. It is the, what, it's a Thursday, thank you. April 25th, and I do remember this event, I promise I'll be there. Anyway, it's at Memorial Park. We've invited Parkview Elementary, 3rd grade this year. So, we'll have a presentation by Brad Olson again. We'll plant a few new trees in the park and then it's fun because we always do a giveaway. One student in each class will also receive a free tree. So, it's a fun event. We're able to learn about planting trees, taking care of trees, and how important trees are. So, and then I'll announce a new thing that we're doing, we're having a tree climbing championship. I will give more information on that, it's the end of May, 1st of June. So, we are just very fortunate to have this event actually in Pace. So, the first part of May, they'll actually come and trim our trees of Memorial Park and I'm hoping there's trees left. I always get worried when people come to trim. So, anyway, so anyway, at the end of May then, they come back and they actually compete in a climbing championship and the public is welcome to come. I mean, they say there's snow and there'll be a couple of big trucks and it will be really fun. So, more information coming on that one. Okay, I think that's it.
I've got a little bit of information. They are, there are a group of arborists that are here in this area and they, as a payback to us for letting us, letting them use our trees in the park, they're going to do the arborist thing for about eight or nine of those trees. They'll trim the trees and make them look very nice and, as you say, they'll have a competition. And by all means, please let everybody know because the more the merrier, this will be a big event.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, no more staff. I will go ahead and turn some time over to the council, starting with Councilman Welton.
Okay, just got a few things here. One is, I'd like to thank Janine for helping with that Volunteer Day at Stadium Cinemas. It was really good. It was nice that we had other volunteers working at Dry Creek, but next year, hopefully, we aren't asking them to do something at the same time so we can show them how much we appreciate them instead of asking them to do more. So, I appreciate all the volunteers that work on Dry Creek too. That's going to be really good and important for our community. And then, just thank Chris Phillips, the owner of Stadium Cinemas, for helping with that. If you have a chance, she has a brand-new stadium theater chairs in there, so go visit our local theater and support her. I've been by the pickleball courts lately over at Memorial Park, but they've gotten those all, the cement was being poured last, a week ago, so they look really great, so they're coming right along. I'd like to thank those that helped with the remodel over there, it's coming right along. We're going to have this building looking a lot nicer and a lot of things in the community are coming along and we're, this community's going to grow, but we want to grow smart and just the people in the community is what makes it great, so thank you very much.
Thank you Brian. I want to thank Janine also. I was down there to the movie and it was fun to see families come and bring their children and that it helped us and it was a fun show and I really appreciate all those volunteers. And we were so thankful for Chris for letting us have that showhouse and it's a great thing to have in Pace. A lot of us, I think, overlook that showhouse and go to Spanish Worker Provo, but boy, guys, that is a nice theater and now with those new seeds, they are really nice. So, make sure you support our local. I also want to thank Kent Fountain and the staff down at, down there.
Landfield?
Landfield. Down at the landfill. I've commented about, several times about how good the landfill looks. I don't know how many of you have been down there, I'm sure most of you have. Compared to five years ago, you don't even think it's the same place. It looks so good. And I want to congratulate them because they had an inspection by the Division of Waste Management and, anyway, they were cleared and said that they have done a fine job down there. And so, I wanted to thank Kent, unfortunately, he's not here, and his staff for all the work that they do down there. You very seldom see trash out on the road and I think that's really good for them to do that. I'd also like to thank Tracy and for all the work that he's done here in, here in our council, in the city offices. He's done a heck of a lot of work and along with those that have helped him and we so appreciate everything that he's done. I have a question about the Arbor Day. I had a gentleman call me that said, "We are not a member of Tree USA."
Tree City.
Tree City. And he was wondering if we'd think about doing that.
We have in the past.
Oh.
We have for several years.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Just in the last couple of years that we, there's a paper you're supposed to fill out and log on your.
Log on and all that, yeah.
So, that's something we do. So that's something we do.
Yeah, we can look at it, the price cap going up to be a Tree City. I think we qualify in all respects, but we can take a look after.
Well, he would love to have, he's over that, up in the northern part, up in Salt Lake, and he lives here in Payson, and he would love to have Payson City be that again, and is willing to come and talk with the council and bring someone else.
Do you have the contact?
I do, I've got his number. I don't have it with me right now, but I can let you know what his name and his number. And I think that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, I'd just like to echo another thing that two councils persons have talked about before me, but there's a couple, three things I'd like to add to that. Dry Creek, it was really a sight to see, to see how many of our citizens came out to support each other and the city as a whole. If you have driven by that area, you'll see how much refuge and under the growth, the overgrowth that has been pulled out of there, so kudos to our citizens. They always respond in a positive way when we need some help. Would like to share to you, with you, that we are currently working with NRCS, which is the mitigation for the forced fire and the runoff that we're expecting. As you all well know, I'm sure, government moves very, very slow, and the federal government is very good at that, but we're continuing to work with them. Was able to have a meeting with Senator Mike Lee, trying to get his help to speed the process up, there's quite a bit of money that we need to have to address some of the problems that have occurred and will occur if we don't get that money. I think it's something like $25 million that we need, but the federal government will pay 75% of it, and we need to come up as communities with 25% of that. So whatever help he can give to us, he assured us that he would. And then just again, with Janine and the wellness, the Pay It Forward, fully support that, and it's a very good thing for our community to participate in, so thank you.
Tell them that the federal help that is community, that it's not just Payson City. Likewise, I'd like to thank everybody, I thought it was ironic and appropriate that our Volunteer Day was, we had volunteers, and we were thanking them, they were watching movies, the same time we had another set of volunteers out cleaning out the Dry Creek channel, and it was impressive that we were able to do both. And we were able to say thanks to those who had volunteered before, and they were celebrating a reward, and having a good time, and we still had enough people to go out and clean out the Dry Creek channel. And I didn't realize how much stuff that was in there, but I worked there for five hours, and it was, I was pretty tired when I was done, but it was fun. I also should have said this earlier when our police department was up there, but if you haven't seen yet, Payson was ranked as the fourth safest city in Utah, and that should have been something that we recognized earlier with all your police force here. Big shout-out to Chief Bishop and all of his staff, and to our community members as well, for looking out for one another and taking care of things. That's pretty impressive, because I think it wasn't too long ago that we were on the other end of that scale, so congratulations. Let's see, just again, I would encourage everybody to take part in the general plan, if you can't make it to the meeting on April 25th, for the parks and boroughs and everything like that, you can go to ImaginePayson.com and give your feedback on that. I encourage everybody to get involved. I think that's all I have, oh, one other thing is, I'm sure the streets are well aware, but we've got some potholes, and there are some that are getting enough to swap, big enough to swallow a car. There are some really big potholes this year, and I don't know, like, I know there's a lot, and I know they've got to help find out, but I was wondering if, on some of these bigger ones that are opening up, if we do more than just pour some stuff in, like, there's some that look like they need a little bit more work, and I'll leave that up to the experts, but if you could ask on that, when you're with him. Travis, I guess.
Okay. I echo what they have to say. By the time we get to the other end, everybody's already thanked everybody. I wanted to thank planning and zoning, Travis, Nestor, Joe, and Daniel, I've been asking them lots of questions, they've been giving me lots of input, and I appreciate that they're out there looking for solutions to a lot of concerns that citizens do have, and that we are, that they really are pushing to find the best plans for our city to go on. I really do take up a lot of their time, and I do appreciate that. Also, I attended a Envision, a Valley Visioning Conference today, and it was very, very interesting. Not only are we as a city doing our planning, but the Utah County is doing major planning also, and they're working together, not just as a county, but as cities, and there were so many different people there, there were mayors, there were, you know, the city managers, there were attorneys, the main person from Envision, Mike from Geneva, just, there were so many people there that had so much influence, it just was amazing to hear all of their ideas. And so, I encourage all of us on the next one, that we should all be there, because it really was eye-opening, and there were so many more ideas that they had that we don't have, or that I haven't heard about yet, that I just encourage you, when we have the next one, that you attend, just because it was very good.
Yeah, we've had others as well, but.
Yeah, I know it was for the day.
Okay, Linda.
I'm sorry, I forgot this. I don't know how many of you have been at Main Street and noticed our bear cage. Tonight, the FHA from Payson High School were up there painting, and it's a beautiful green again, instead of all the peeled off that was there. I got out of the car and thanked them so much for doing that, it was a great service that they did. They said they did it six years ago, and I says, "Well, I don't think it's been touched since then," and it looks so good. Go have a picture in front of the bear cage, it's great, thank you.
I thought you could say there's a bear in it.
Travis, you came in late, do you have anything for us, a staff report?
We did get the smell.
Yeah, we did get that.
Oh, good, I'll have her too. I came in late because I was at the meeting with the NRCS, and the county, and all the other cities. Right now, there's no funding through the NRCS, but they do have a phone call tomorrow morning that they're optimistic that there hopefully will be some funding, so we'll see how much it is. They're pursuing a couple other options, you know, to see if not only that funding's available, but some other funding that'll be 100% match, if they can get it, it's longer term to get it. And they're also looking at doing a thing with the governor to try to declare another emergency, if the NRCS falls through, so they're trying a couple different options, so we are moving forward, but, and we do have a consultant on board, ready to go as soon as the funding is available to design all these projects, so we're just kind of waiting to see if they fund it, because I guess the issue of Puerto Rico took all the funding, and so now they're seeing what the government will do, so.
Thanks, Travis, I knew you had that reading, and hopefully you had some information. Okay, we'll move on to scout attendance certificates, I believe we have three scouts here, and Councilman Carter will take care of that.
Okay, when I call your name, I'd like you to come up, I'll give you your receipt, not your receipt, your certificate. We've got the officer right here, anyway, I'll have you come up, I want you to go through and shake your council's hand, and then stand right here, all of you in a row, because there's something else I want to ask. So the first one is Quinn Potter. Yeah, so embarrassed, congratulations, there you go. I'll listen to yours, I want to give you, okay. And then Tanner Smith. And then we have Brevin Peterson.
Think you guys don't have to get over coffee.
I'm not going to do anything mean here. Okay, now what I like to do, I'm waiting for that one question to be answered that's different than anybody else, so we'll see if this group will give it to us. What do you like about scouting? Think about it, guys. Okay, go ahead. Loud, so they can hear you.
I like that I can learn how to do different skills in my life, so I can change my perspective.
That was great. That was good, okay, how about you? You've done better. What do you like about scouting?
I just like going camping.
Camping, that's awesome, thank you, how about you?
I like scouting, because it's helped me a lot in my life, and it's taught me what to do in case I'm learning.
Great, okay, we appreciate these scouts, thank you, boys.
Okay, we'll move on to the Mayor's Youth Award Recognition Award, Rebecca Knapp.
So we have like three awards to recognize tonight, if you can come stand up here when I call your name. First is Aaron Gattia from Mountainville Junior High, he's here. His teachers say that they've always appreciated how hard Aaron works, not only in school, but also in extracurriculars. He has a growth mindset, and it shows in how he works. He's an example to those around him. He's an incredibly amazing young man, with, who's had a 4.0 GPA the past three years. He is kind, polite, and extremely well-narrated, he's a part of the Latinos in Action Presidency, and has won the 2018 USA Boxing National Tournament in Salt Lake City. He has a first-degree black belt in karate, has won tournaments in jiu-jitsu, and two-time wrestling champion for our school district. So, congrats, Aaron. Our next one is for Cam Ford from Payson Junior High. Teachers say that Cam is always so focused on learning, he works very hard in class, pays close attention, and really strikes to learning. He was on the wrestling team last year and did a very great job, he worked hard in practice, helped motivate other wrestlers to do their best, and represented the school really well. He's a great student, who loves learning, and works hard every day on his assignments. So congrats, Cam. All right, and then our last one's for Brevin McDee from Payson High School. His teachers say that he's always the first person to volunteer to help without even being asked. He's so kind to his classmates and accepting of all types of people. He's the captain of a Utah County Water Polo Team, and also participates on the high school, Payson, on the Payson High School, so in theme the past four years. He works as a lifeguard for Payson City, and after high school, he plans to go on a mission to Mexico City for two years, and when he gets back, he's going to Tensno College, so congrats, Brevin.
Okay, we'll move on to, they've named it here, the Mayor's Team Recognition. Unfortunately, the junior high school wrestling team couldn't come tonight, but we would like to honor Payson High School Boys Basketball Team for top four in state. So Coach Anthony Mitchell, would you bring your boys up here? And if you would, introduce them to us. Have Coach Greg Bynes with you as well.
This is Cam Stone, Grayton, Kay Logan-Sortson, Sam Mitchell, Gage Williams, Brandon Jensen, our manager Donovan Trader, Hunter Bateman, call him Taters, but it's Hayden, Hayden Roundy, and Hayden Swayze. And this is Coach Bys.
Hopefully, would you tell us a little bit about the song that you had this year, and the state competition you had?
What song is that?
Well, it's, yeah, the whole year.
I'm just really proud of these boys, the way they play. Beginning of the year, we had our struggles and issues, but we learned from them, and we did well in state, and very proud of them, more importantly, I'm proud of the men that we are, we're really great, really great boys, love to be around them. So, thank you, boys.
Guys, if you can have a picture, take our council's hat. A picture.
Yeah, I'll have the count with me on the front row, right? No, that's where we're standing, two steps up.
So I've got the half keeping, we have to do that. Okay, we'll move on to the action items. Final class for Springside Metal, Platts I, J, and N, located in the area of 1900 South and 500 West. Jill, are you up?
I am.
Good. Jill, are you surviving? Yeah, we'll open your voice.
I am, it's going to be a short presentation. But you have seen Springside Metal, the location, so I'm going to have to go through the history. So as the mayor announced, we're looking at Springside Metals, Platts I, J, and N. So the Springside Metals development is located near the Spring Lake Elementary School. So the area that's outlined in red, you have the majority that was part of the memorandum annexation that was annexed into Payson City in 2003. Then there's that area on the lower left-hand corner where it says Platts N, that area was part of the, oh, my. That area was part of the, oh, excellent. Um, so this area here is part of the Butler Annexation. Majority of this property has been purchased by Salisbury Homes and has been completed in multiple stages. However, there is some additional property outside the boundaries of Springside Meadows that is still owned by other property owners and is not plotted for development at this time. So the property that Salisbury Homes owns is the area that's highlighted in the pink. Plats A through, A, B, and C have been completed and all homes constructed. Plot D here has been improved and later being built by D.R. Horton. Plot E has been approved, improvements in, and building permits have been issued for D.R. Horton as well. The applicant has received final plat approval for Plats F, G, H, and L. And the applicant is requesting final plat approval for Plats I, J, and N tonight. So there is a few other Plats, um, you know, M, and K, P, and O over here that will still be plotted at some point in the future and get approval by this body. But the applicant is looking for I, J, and N at this time. So Plats, um, phases I and J is the multifamily portion of the townhomes that will be developed. Just to show location, the Spring Lake Elementary School is located here. And then Plat Phase N is the larger single-family lots located next to what will be a future city park in this location. Um, so here is, it's a layout of Plats I and J, so this is the multifamily. So we do have some single-family lots on the east side, 1800 South on the north. Spring Lake Elementary School here, just to orient you because it did shift north from going up to, going to the left. Um, you do have some new roadways that will dissect the property and then provide access to the garages and the development. And then this is going to be the future 1900 South. It will not be built with these phases. Uh, where that road will be located is on property that the applicant does not own. And so the applicant will have access for all of their units internal to the development, but this particular road will be built at some point in the future. There are some amenities that are provided throughout this development. There are some landscape areas and a playground located here. There are benches that will be provided along the walkways that go all the way through the development. And then there's a pavilion area here. There's also some visitor parking areas that have been located throughout the development for visitors for this multifamily project. This just shows the landscaping plan of how they're planning to landscape around those units. Some of the amenities that will be provided in the development. The applicant has also provided an elevation of the pavilion that will be constructed in this development and that will be included in the development agreement that you will see here in the next couple of meetings. So as I mentioned, they're requesting approval of Plat I. This shows where it is and location of the larger development. Here's a copy of the final plat showing the number of units. Um, just as a side note, the total number of townhomes in these two phases total is 89 townhomes. Plat J is located here, Spring Lake Elementary School being there. Here's a copy of the final plat showing the road network. Plat N is located more towards the southwest portion of the development. Includes these single-family lots here next to the park area. Copy of the plat that shows that there are larger lots in the development. So items of consideration, there's a lot that we are looking at overall because this is a multiple-phase plan. So there are a lot of overall issues that need to be addressed through that. Those are listed there. I'm not necessarily gonna go through all those. They're consistent with what is brought to you in the past. Um, those items will also be included in the development agreement. So as far as each phase, I and J, I did combine those because they are both the multifamily. Um, we are requiring two car garages and uncovered guest parking in that area. RV parking, the applicant is requesting for a waiver of that, showing that in the Project CCNRs. Um, on-street parking will be prohibited and will be enforced by the HOA. Project amenities include, as I mentioned previously, the playground area, including equipment, picnic areas with pavilion, it announces picnic acre. Um, so tables, barbecue facilities, and then pedestrian walkways throughout the development. Um, the housing product, I've got some pictures of that. It's also included in your packet. Um, we'll go over those in a moment, but those, staff is also proposing that the design standards be consistent with our RMF zone. I will work with the applicant on that. Project CCNRs have been provided, um, you know, similar to what will be used for this development. We'll continue to work with the applicant to refine those before the plat is recorded. Plat N, uh, there is restricted access on 1900 South. 1900 South is gonna be the main arterial that comes from Main Street and then continues out to SR 198. So we do limit the, um, any, or the number of access points. We do have some that are connecting to 1900. But in the case of Plat N, there is an interior road that they can connect to, so we are restricting any access to be on the internal roads. Um, we're also proposing a neighborhood trail connector through that development. So those living in that neighborhood do not need to walk all the way around the block to get to the park. There'll actually be a neighborhood connector that will go directly into the park area. And then on that park space, there is an existing single-family home on that parcel. And it is the applicant's responsibility, as part of that dedication, to demolish that single-family home and disconnect the services to that existing home. This is an elevation of the front load units. Um, there's several of these throughout the development, but this is what you'll see along 800 South, or 1800 South and 1900 South. Just showing that the actual access or the garages will be in the back of the building. So the pedestrian entrance or the entrance into the home and the porches will be the focal point along those main roads. So that's the front there. And then, um, in this area here, this is actually the back of this building. So you have this building facing on the, um, the exterior roads. And then this is what you will see on the internal area. So as you can see, there's still a lot of wall relief, variation of materials and colors, um, and even having some masonry on here. Little landscape area has, you know, I think entrances or the pack entrances associated with it. And then this up here shows the front load because there are some structures in there that will be front loaded. And so this is what you will see for the front yard. This will be the front door for these units. As you can see, they've modified, um, you know, the look, the architect, some of the architectural features on these buildings as to provide a variety through the development. So the approval process, um, the applicant has received preliminary plat approval, is requesting final plat approval. There's still a couple of other unfinished items that we'll need to take care of. And once the approval has been granted, staff will begin working on the development agreement and the utility services extension agreement. So the decision, uh, well, there was a recommendation by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did recommend approval as proposed, with, well, with a couple of changes, with staff's conditions, and then also, um, that the RV parking and storage be handled as follows. That in the multifamily area, that it be, they were okay with waiving the RV parking storage area in the multifamily, recognizing that there will be CCNRs that will be enforced to address any on-street parking. As far as Plat N, they're wanting to do similar to they have, as they have done in the other single-family phases, which is to widen the garage site setback to accommodate some RV pad, um, storage next to the garage. So, and that was something that was recommended by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the housing product as well as the amenity package. Uh, there was, as I mentioned, some condition of approval, um, that we have provided those red lines. We're finalizing those red lines to the applicant. Those will need to be addressed. Um, including how to address the dedication of the park space in Plat N. Um, we have come to an arrangement with the applicant that that, all of that dedication will occur with Plat N, even though there are additional pieces that need to be done. And so we'll continue to work with the applicant on whether or not Plat N is modified to include that property in the boundaries of Plat N or if there's a separate warranty that's prepared to address that dedication. So that is my presentation, unless you have any questions for me. Mark, Mike DeMarco with Salisbury is here. He does not have a presentation, but he's here to answer any questions that you may have as you deliberate and on your, uh, final decision on the final plats.
So I take it that staff's recommendations would be to accept this?
Yes, staff has determined that with the completion of staff conditions, that it would be consistent with our legislative ordinances, the Mauer's, the Civic Plan and Annexation Agreement, and the preliminary upon approval, right, so by the City Council.
Any discussion from council?
I have a couple things. Mark, uh, who's gonna be the builders of the townhomes? Do you know yet?
Like the Salisbury.
Okay, but it could maybe D.R. Horton or... Okay. All right, just on those townhomes, it's much relief and different building materials you do. Sure makes it look a lot better. Like you look at apartments over the depot. They look really good and they, they're attractive from the road because of what they, you know, colors and relief and everything. So anything you do to make those break and mopping, maybe some of them will be, maybe someone could even be set back a little bit, so you got more relief. So I, anything, I encourage anything to, that way it would be really great, so.
Are some of them front-loaded just from where they're situated? Is that why we have some that are front-loaded?
Yeah, so these ones are rear-loaded because they're facing the street here. And so the garages will be in the back and these will be the porches facing the street here. But then like this area here, they will be front-loaded because there's no opportunity to have rear-load on the back.
Okay.
And so you have those, these will also be front-loaded because they're trying to maintain as much open space, usable open space as possible. So all of these here will be front-load. So the majority are front-load, uh, just because this property is not owned by the applicant, so there wasn't an opportunity to do anything different there. But anywhere where we could find that they could have, you know, front-facing on those streets, uh, the applicant was willing to, to include that into the, into the plan. These ones will also be front-facing. So all of the ones along here will be front-facing with just access to the garage in the back.
Any further discussion? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion as we approve the final plat for Spring Meadows, um, Plats I, J, and N. And with staff conditions and findings, and with the RV parking on the multifamily, waive the RV parking. And on the, uh, Plat N, we'll just widen the garage site so they have a place for put their RV, RVs.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, I believe, unanimous. We'll move on to number two. Review and, uh, and decision regarding the Holloway Pleasant Plats Annexation located adjacent to Anne South of SR 198 extending to 100 South and between 1300 East and 1500 East. Daniel?
Okay, I'm almost there. Um, and just, so I am refreshed, this has not come to City Council since, long time, since the work session. Okay. We've been talking to a lot of people about this, but a lot of Planning Commissioners, then, huh?
So it was presented to Planning Commission, they recommended, uh...
So it went to Planning Commission in October. It was remanded. It came to Planning Commission, uh, a little while ago and was remanded. And then it went to Planning Commission and was approved with the recommendation that there are some design standards created before the annexation agreement is recorded. So that's where we're at, well, we're working toward that process today. So today's, um, actually, this is probably a question for Kim to make sure this is done correctly. We're not doing the annexation agreement tonight, so that's in the future, um, City Council. And so tonight, is it not a resolution, it's a...
Normally it's postponed, but we're postponing that because once the ordinance is adopted, we have 30 days to get it to Lieutenant Governor and the agreement will be ready. So we'll have to ordinance on the, if it's a general procedure. So we can basically approve what we want tonight, and we'll, here is the end.
So we could approve the annexation contingent on other things happening, right?
We'll get to that exact language when we get to the last, well, it's not on the last slide, but we'll discuss that as we get to the end of the presentation. Um, so, uh, some background here before we jump in. Uh, so this came to the Planning Commission in October 2018 and was tabled due to several outstanding issues. This was at the beginning of the staff report. So let's go through those real quick. Um, at that time in October, so depending on how we've been following along, um, we had some of the property that didn't have a specified zone. Then we had some evolving land uses at the time. Um, we had unresolved studies on utilities and traffic. Um, some questions regarding the UDOT roads, um, questions regarding the local grid system and layout, and then concerns regarding the original proposed density. That was back in October. Since then, that has all been resolved, at least to the satisfaction of staff. Um, and that's addressed in the staff report with the first six points. So hopefully you have an opportunity to go through that, see how that was resolved. Um, and so you'll see that what's proposed differs some from what you looked at last summer, fall. So with that said, um, let's jump on in. So, um, Holloway Pleasant Plats Annexation is on the east side of town and the south side of the highway. Um, it comprises about 43, 43 to 44 acres, over three parcels. On that land, almost all of it is agricultural purposes right now. There is one existing single-family home and, um, you can see the zones. Um, in the county, we have agricultural zoning for these properties. Adjacent to it, we have the PO1, professional office zone. Part of that property is developed, but part of it's not, even though it is PO1. Um, across the street, we have the A5H, that's agricultural zone as well, but within city limits, within city limits. And then some professional office space kitty corner on the northwest side. Um, and then on the north, I should say, southwest side, we have some R1A, so single-family residential on minimum 1800 lot residential parcels. With what's proposed, we have a commercial area on the northeast corner, professional office space. Then, um, RMF, that's residential multifamily at densities of 15 units per acre and 20 units per acre. And then what's proposed on the map for a smaller three-acre parcel adjacent to the medical offices is also RMF 15 with the recognition that, um, the owner of that land doesn't have any immediate plans to develop. I mean, that could change, but we are bringing it in consistent with the land next to it. Um, in the professional office space, um, there's discussion of 55-plus community. However, that would require a zone amendment, um, in the future. And then, let's see...
Was there assisted living talked about?
Uh, and assisted living in the PO as well, yep. So this is pretty consistent or close to consistent or approaching consistency, however we want to call it, with the east side comprehensive plan, which shows a commercial node on the northeast corner of this property. Um, and we'll get a little bit more into that once we see the regional streets network. And we'll cover the east side comprehensive plan in another slide. So, um, there's a Nevo Beltway, um, that's anticipated to cross SR 198 right at the northeast corner. Um, at that intersection, we're anticipating a power, power intersection, so a large commercial intersection on all four corners where we have commercial. And so, uh, the proposed general commercial area is just one of those four corners. Um, and then densities around that, or inside that node, around the intersection, that would be greater than the surrounding density. So we'd start dense and then work its way out to lower density as we go further away from that intersection. Also with this slide, um, with the local roads, staff has worked with the applicant to lay it out in a way that there's a local grid created, so not all traffic has to channel on the same roads. And so local traffic can avoid using the highway and the Nevo Beltway, which will be a much larger collector road. Um, and that way pedestrians, cyclists, or other local drivers can stay on the, the smaller roads for shorter trips and reduce the traffic impact. And we'll get more to the traffic impact. With regional connectivity, uh, right here, you can see the, um, UDOT's, um... It's not their record of decision, but you can see the layout from UDOT of that Nevo Beltway, making its way down to where the Holloway Annexation is on that southeast side where the colors are to give you some representation of how that fits within the broader community. the broader community. Then, um, with its impact on the community, um, we do anticipate a challenge here. Um, in the short term, this will create, um, we imagine quite the challenge. Uh, we think in the long run, um, with future roadways and with, you know, the Nevo Beltway, um, with potential modifications to SR 198 and then, you know, our local roads, uh, we could disperse traffic and then as we develop more on the east side, we could reduce the number of trips required for the, um, for the individuals that would, um, live out here. But interim, what we're looking at is a capacity of nineteen thousand cars per day on SR 198. However, we're currently, um, over fourteen thousand cars per day. Uh, the numbers here are slightly dated, um, so we, we would imagine we're a little bit above that fourteen thousand right now. With the Holdaway annexation, um, not everything will be built, you know, at once. But we're, we're looking at the potential impact of thirteen to fourteen thousand new trips generated per day. Not all of those trips across, uh, across town, not all of those trips will use SR 198. Um, those trips could be from one neighbor to another, they could remain within the neighborhood, um, they could be to another facility close by. But the point being that there are, um, that there's a projection of thirteen to fourteen thousand new trips per day, many of which will be on SR 198. We would anticipate that, that would overload SR 198 in the interim. Um, so staff views that as, I guess we would call it the con in all of this and, um, a factor to consider to weigh, um, against, of course, the long-term benefits, um, of development. And this is a, this is the classic example of a growing pain, um, where our legislative officials need to be sure that they're aware of the impact of the growing pain and that we're okay with that and we're okay telling our constituents why we, um, elected to go through this growing pain. Doesn't mean we need to avoid the pain, but we wanted to, uh, be aware of it. Then consistency with the general plan, I think this is where we see, um, this proposal being most consistent, um, with the long-term goals of the city. So on the left there, I guess on both, on the slide, you see the East Side comprehensive plan. Um, you see a commercial village for that, um, corner. Uh, you see some density with housing. And this, um, proposal is more or less consistent with that plan. Now, I think I have some slides coming up for the general plan, oh, so East Side comprehensive plan, so the commercial village, the professional office space, um, as well as standards for architectural, architecture and design. Um, applicant has, um, been working, um, to provide more, uh, standards. There are some that were submitted in the packet. Um, and the applicant is still working with, um, uh, coming up with, um, residential design guidelines that would be in place before the annexation agreement is adopted. So here's some basic, um, uh, typicals, I guess. These aren't, um, proposed elevations, these are just saying typical of this kind of development. Um, and if I say anything incorrect, just shake your head, no. Now, um, briefly to walk through kind of an exercise, uh, to explain to those here, um, the process that we're going through, um, as, as planners as we evaluate this proposal. Um, our current population, um, is around twenty thousand. Um, a projection though, with twenty fifty is fifty-eight thousand and by twenty sixty sixty-seven thousand. We're anticipating a lot of growth. And that growth can occur, um, in many different ways. And we've recognized that as we deal with the challenges of growth, we're going to need to rethink, um, how we manage growth and maybe use, um, use tools or methods that differ from how we've done growth in the past. Um, and I think that's across all political parties, um, across all philosophies. We, we recognize the need to handle growth, um, maybe a little bit different than how we have before. So if we were to continue with the same patterns that we've always had, um, you've kind of seen the background, the, the typical curvilinear, curvilinear streets, single-family detached homes, um, this model shows, um, what would happen to our city. That yellow is the area that would be inhabited by a single-family homes, uh, to accommodate that projected growth. So you can see that by twenty fifty and twenty sixty, we would fill up almost all of our land, um, with what planners like to call sprawl. Um, that's this, you know, almost never-ending growth of single-family homes. And when once all the lands fill up, then we're done and new growth goes further and further south. Um, and so that, that is one option. And if we wanted to go that route, then I would suggest that this proposal is inconsistent with this kind of route. Now, that kind of route would get rid of our rural character pretty quick. It would take our farmland and orchards and convert it into single-family homes. Um, so that's part of the, the balance that we have to, to weigh. Um, I know some people don't like density, but if we are against density, then we're, we're against preserving land. As we look at growing, um, our, our currents, as we go through the general plan and as the council's aware, um, we're going through a general plan update, uh, we're in the middle of it. And with those discussions, we've been looking at various options like that first one, which is our, our sprawl model, if you will. Um, the other option we've been looking at is more of a nodal development. And this map right here shows, um, a potential, uh, this is nothing adopted, but this is something, you know, being discussed, uh, of nodal development with a prioritization plan. So the circles represent nodes that would be higher density. And the idea of a node is that it would have a, a lot of the things that you need for your day-to-day life right there close to you. So you'd have the, the Walgreens or, you know, whatever pharmacy close by and the school and the church and the park and all of that, um, right nearby, um, so that you wouldn't have to have all of these long crosstown trips. Um, you can have it in the node. And that requires, uh, more density. And so each of those nodes represents higher density, some of them along transit lines, um, potentially with front runner. Um, and some of them just at major power intersections. What we're looking right now is where it says one, the question mark. And that's because we haven't adopted this annexation yet. And we're saying as planners, is this where our priority is going to be? Is this an immediate, uh, priority? And if so, let's move forward. If not, then let's make that decision. Uh, if we move forward, we're, we're going kind of more with, with this route of nodal development, uh, curtailing growth, uh, to certain areas rather than sprawling it out further. Then I think, yeah, the last slide. So utilities, uh, we wanted to mention that this has been the ongoing discussion with utilities for months and months and months. And, um, I, I believe I will be speaking accurately if I say that our engineers have worked with their engineers and, um, figured that out with the satisfactory, satisfaction of the city. And that's in the, the land use infrastructure plan, uh, that was in the packet. So if you have any questions with that, Travis is here, but that's, that's been going on for some time. And, um, I know at first there were a lot of concerns with that, um, but those concerns have been addressed. So lastly, um, as I mentioned earlier, it went to planning commission. At planning commission, there was a hearing, public hearing. And, um, planning commission recommended approval after that public hearing, um, with the contingency that council considers, um, of residential design guidelines, either at this meeting or just with the annexation agreement, um, before the annexation agreement is signed. Um, so with tonight, um, council may approve, um, demand, uh, remand, um, if more information's required. Um, then of course deny if it goes against ordinance, if it isn't consistent with land use goals of the city, if the city wants to go a different direction. Um, this is a legislative decision. And so council has broad discretion to approve or to, um, deny, um, based on the consistency with, with the plan and whether we think this is a good thing, uh, whether the pros outweigh the cons here. So with that, we'll probably want to make sure that Kim approves of, um, the language, 'cause I, I didn't know exactly right how the, if this is, uh, recommend, or if it's approved or if it's a... So with the motion, we'll continue to make sure Kim takes a look at that. Any questions for me?
I've got, I've got one quick, uh, I, I noticed on the, on the, the traffic slide that the, the yellow was, was going all the way into the city and make that, that turn and go, go out and sit on SR 198. And I think this is something I brought up in the, in the planning commission meeting. Uh, there is 600 East that could handle some of that, uh, traffic that goes to the north and to the south. That's a collector road, uh, even at present. And then there's another road that, uh, is in the planning stages that will be, uh, become reality fairly quick with the, the road that is coming out of Elk Ridge going to Benjamin Area. So...
Right.
So with those things, you know, traffic, it, it is still going to be a concern, but it would be less of a concern. Am I making that valid statement?
Yeah, that, that's right. There, there would still be a lot of cars within that little section. But yeah, the new road with Elk Ridge would divert a lot of crosstown traffic that we're getting from other cities. Uh, so that would help reduce our, our current load, which would then allow for new cars to come in with the annexation, yes.
I have a few questions for you. Um, have we talked to Salem about the roads going east, um, for the grid system and...
Uh, yes, we have.
So they're kind of, one that went right to the middle is going east. We've talked to them about that and they're... Yes, okay. Um, then do you, is that where the bus line goes? Does it go down right on this 198?
Yes, it goes on SR 198. Um, we are meeting with UTA. We haven't had specific discussions about the bus station at this location yet, but we are going to let UTA know, um, assuming this gets approved, that it has been approved, we'll let them know about the density. Uh, the bus does go along that route and so hopefully we have a new, you know, a new stop.
And I know one thing, that, that, the long range line, they talked about the BRT along that road too, so that wouldn't be getting a lot of the...
It would be a ways out, but yes, yes. I, I think in the long range, there are lots of opportunities to reduce, um, the impact with, with, um, public transit, also with, um, the grid system, you know, with other roads and with roads throughout the communities.
Well, I like this, gone from a two acre, two acres commercial to about eleven acres. I think that was one point, point that we, right at the beginning, we all talked about, so. And so, other than that, I'm, I'm pretty fine with it.
I have a question. When they do this, are they, what are they going to, what they want to be first?
That's not a question I can... That's not a question I, I can answer. Do you, would you like to ask the applicant?
I would like to ask that.
Okay, are there any questions for me before the applicant comes up?
I did have one question. So you showed the, the kind of blob planning thing that we went through with our, our general plan, right? So that's just one. I don't know that I've ever seen the feedback on what residents prefer, 'cause they showed them to all the residents, where are they at on what they want? Do they prefer the urban sprawl? Are they pretty mixed? Do they...
It's pretty preliminary right now. From the workshops we had, they were preferring, uh, it was like options two and three or whatever they were. Uh, option one was always the suburban sprawl. Um, two and three was kind of a mix of the densities, but, um, I, it seemed pretty clear to me, at least from the workshops, that people were rejecting the flat-out urban sprawl and doing some sort of nodal development, infield development, something. Um, I think we haven't quite ironed out what those densities would be, but I think it's pretty clear so far. And I keep looking at Jill, so she can like shake her head if she, you know, saw things differently. Uh, it seemed pretty clear to me from at least the workshops. You don't have any, well, I guess we do have a little bit of citywide data, but I don't have that with me.
So there's the one concern, like we go through all this time, we spend all this money, we try to bring in the citizenry, we do the plan that they clearly did not want before it's done. That would be a problem and that would be a waste of money to a certain extent and a waste of political capital with your residents. So I've got a little bit of concern in there.
Yeah, I think we can say that this model is hands down not preferred. Um, whether, if we were to like, you know, pull on our, our whole community, they would adopt nodal development if this is a priority number one, I, I can't say that.
Well, you know, but that type of development would help keep the character of our, of our city intact and, and have neighborhoods that are self-sufficient and alleviate the problem of, of, of traffic congestion within the, the city limits itself.
Which we do know from multiple, yes, that's correct. And we do know from multiple surveys that preserving the, the rural character of the community and, and the orchards is important to our residents. That is it. Means you need to adopt more policy.
Well, that's the one concern is the rural character right there is more agrarian where the west mountains, they don't need to pin anybody out on west mountains, but if you're talking about picturesque rural area, that's where it is. No offense. So do we want the applicant... I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. That's a concern, but...
Yeah, Jeff's willing to come up, yeah.
Come on up, Jeff.
Hello?
Hi.
Jeff Southert with South Haven Development. Right, I have to speak. Um, I was here back in October, I think, when, well, it was planning commission and then some of you have toured some of the senior housing that we've done. And I didn't think I'd be standing here as the applicant myself, but it's a long story that I won't bore you with tonight. Or Siri with. But, uh, but, but we are now the applicant and working with the Holdaways directly. Um, the Brown Group had asked me to, to kind of take it through planning commission and city council to finish the annexation. They backed out, I guess, a couple of weeks ago during spring break. I had a flight ready to come back and join you a couple of weeks ago and, and stayed with my family instead. So I'm happy to answer any questions that would be appropriate. I think you had the first question, so remind me.
Well, so if you start that building, what do you want to build it first?
So, great question. I, um, and I don't want to talk a lot about the Brown Group, but, you know, they're in the past now. But, but my understanding is, um, they were trying to get everybody to the table at once and, and try to help everyone who would, or have everyone who is going to be involved, um, participate in the acquisition and the development. Our plan is that we would acquire the property from the Holdaways in mid-July. We would immediately start development of all of the off-site utilities and that backbone, um, grid road that, that basically crisscrosses through the property, um, and all the utilities that go in there. And at that point then, we would sell the two multifamily parcels to someone. But while that was going on, I would, I'm expecting to come back and talk to you about a new zone for senior housing, um, that I haven't, you know, that I've talked about before, it hasn't been a secret. And, and so it's likely that the multifamily would develop first because I've got to create a new zone. But, but my goal with my partners and investors is that we would be moving forward to acquire the land, get, get all of the off-site and development work done, have super pads, if you will, list of utilities ready for those four different quadrants. And, uh, and sell the multifamily and develop the assisted living and senior housing or the PO1 zone. Um, if we don't have it sold, then ours would get built first. But if we sold that and, and they were able to go quicker than me creating a new zone and then getting something approved and then starting, then they would go first. Um, my partners, I've got an assist, I think some of you, most of you toured my senior housing in Lehigh. I've got an assisted living facility of seventy-three beds under construction in Lehigh right now. And, and it's interesting because it's similar to this, it's on a commercial corner. Um, I don't know how familiar you are with Lehigh, but 12th West, which is the Lehigh Block exit, 2100 North. Um, where the Lehigh Block plant is, you get off there and you head north towards Traverse Mountain. And a mile up is an intersection 3200 North. There's a new IHC Instacare facility on one corner. Um, and then we're kind of kitty corner from that. And my, my investor partner owns about eight acres there of commercial ground. And we're putting our assisted living on the east end of that. But I bring that up because he's very patient and he's, he's held that ground for five or six years and he'll probably hold it for a few more years until that commercial ground has more value. This commercial corner, and the Brown Group were really commercial developers, um, this commercial corner will have more value in three to five to eight years when that Nevo Beltway, Parkway, Beltway comes through to that intersection. And so we want to develop, every, get everything ready. And, and our plan is we will probably sit on that commercial ground until it makes sense and there's enough rooftops. sense and there's enough rooftops and that Parkway, Beltway is in and that increases the value of that commercial ground.
One question, if you're, if you're buying in July and you sit on it for three to eight years, is it going to turn into a weed patch? Are you going to farm it out to let somebody continue farming on it?
So one of the things we had to talk about in that annexation agreement is the city may or may not allow us to, to keep it in green belt or, or do some type of harm, because as we start to build stuff around it, they may restrict what that use can be. So I can tell you, no, it won't become a weed patch because we'll have to keep the weeds down. But whether we're allowed to do something that would do that organically or not, I honestly can't tell you. It's kind of up to what the city allows us to do.
So there'll be mowed weeds?
Yeah, possibly.
To have to be that way?
They could keep it in green belt, I mean, if they wanted to. I mean, I'm sure that when they go to close on the property, it's going to be kicked out of green belt because it's going to change ownership, but they could.
They will.
But they could reapply with Utah County to stay in.
Until.
Right, for that portion.
Well, I don't know, I'll be interested, but I would say consider that.
The big, we, we, that would be a benefit to us, but, but the biggest concern was if you've got people living there now, you know, you may or may not want certain agricultural uses right next door. And that's where they were potentially restricting us on what we could do.
I would imagine that could be alfalfa, you know, which it is right now.
Richard, could it still be alfalfa?
Well, it depends on where your road's going, what happens to.
And now you're. Yeah, that's exactly right.
The irrigation.
I think you want, don't you want?
No, it's irrigation, it's row crop irrigation.
So, so, you know, I, I don't have an answer for that yet, just because we'll have to figure out what makes sense based on all the improvements we put in and.
It's something we could definitely work on.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, those are the easy ones. My, my job, it's interesting. It was back in February that Brown Group asked me to, to step in and help. My job really was to translate. I'm not from Utah, but I've lived here longer than California where I was born and raised. And so I, I speak enough Utah and, and enough Arizonan that I could translate between the two groups when, when there really was some confusion with Travis and engineering. When I walked into that first meeting, I'll tell you this, Jill actually gave me a hug. She was so excited to be working with someone other than me.
Well, I was going to say that, that I was excited.
And, and so, so we really weren't that far apart. I mean, I mean, there were a lot of issues that had to be figured out with the sewer and the store, you know, and utilities and that grid system. And Brown Group had been thinking, they're going to require a grid inside each little multi. I'm like, no, they're just talking about the, the backbone grid. Like, don't you, anyways. So, so I translated and we got here and they're really, I think we worked through just about everything. You know, a couple of questions, design guidelines. One of the things I'm trying to do is figure out who the most likely buyer would be. And, and so we're hoping you'll approve it and we can apply those design guidelines with staff's help once we have a better idea of who that buyer is, so that we're giving you a better design guideline based on product that really wants to come. It's hard for me to try to put design guidelines in place when I'm not going to be the one building that product. And that was kind of a hurdle for the Brown Group as well. And, and staff trying to say, well, what are we going to get? You know, and, and nobody really knew. So that gives me a little bit of time to try to see if we can't work that out. But, but our goal is to acquire it, develop it, sell off the portions that we don't want, work on the, the assisted living and the senior housing in that PO1 zone. And, and then we'll develop the commercial as soon as it makes sense. But I get the feeling based on everything going on, that, that's not tomorrow, that's a few years down the road.
Yeah. Okay, but you said it wasn't Mexican, you did a lot of people.
That wasn't Mexican. I guess the only other thing I'd say, I know the traffic is a, is a concern, obviously. When we were in our meeting with staff, and hopefully Travis will nod as I say this, but, but as we talked about UDOT, I said, look, UDOT's not going to widen or do anything to SR 198 until it fails, right? And, I mean, that's just kind of how UDOT functions. So I teased him and I said, you're welcome. You know, we'll help it fail faster, but it's going to fail one way or the other before they do anything. So I don't think this particular project is the reason that's going to happen. It might make it happen a little faster and then we'll get it developed a little faster, but all the growth that's headed this way, it's, that's going to fail one way or the other. And, and so what we do, and with that Nevo Beltway coming through, I, I think it all makes sense and it's smart development. So, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion by council? Okay, I believe we're ready for a motion.
So is this a resolution since it's not an ordinance or what, what is it?
I think you just make a motion to, if you want to approve the annexation contingent on the ordinance. Yes.
Okay. So I'll make the motion that we approve the Holdaway Pleasant Flats annexation, subject to an ordinance being drafted up with, and with new, with design guidelines of being placed for the, for the buildings that go in there.
And the annexation agreement will also come back to the.
And the annexation agreement will also come back to council.
Okay, we have a motion that's seconded. Second. Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. Doesn't call for roll call, so we'll just vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Doesn't sound like it, so it carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to number three, resolution, appointments to the parks, arts, recreation and culture. It's P A R C tax. Dave, did you want to have me do or I go ahead and do this? Okay, we, we interviewed myself, Dave, and Councilman Hewlett interviewed about five, I believe, hopefuls. Out of those five, we came down to two. It's, it's our recommendation, I believe, council. You can see in your packet, the resumes or the applications of these people. We are recommending Doug Cloward be one of the appointees and Colleen Wilson be the other appointee. Just for your, your knowledge, this would be for the time period from April 2019 until 2020, keeping us in sync with what's going on currently. We're a little bit late doing this and that's why it won't be a full two years, but it will keep us in sync with the other appointees. So those are the two recommendations.
Are they staggered or are they all at the same time?
There's three, there's, there's three, every year there'll be, there's three, one year that will be replacement to these two next year.
Because if they're only going a year and the others are going out on a year or two, aren't they?
They're, they're, when we, when we did the first appointment, we did two for one year and two for two years, the two-year appointments.
Right.
But this, the, the, the one years expired in August of 2018 and we didn't get to a total appointment. So it should be a two-year appointment from August of 18.
Okay.
That's why it's shortened a little bit because we're all, we're all slow games here. So the three, the other three will expire in August of this year and then we get on that and they will be for a two-year. This should have been a two-year, it's just from August till now we didn't get this appointed.
Okay, is there a motion or any further discussion?
And who are the others that apply that, like, you know?
Oh, I don't know if I have them right here.
Aye.
You have.
Okay.
I always put the two in the packet.
That's all.
Guy Arsene was one, there was a, Kikum.
Yeah, there was a Kit, Kit Morgan.
Kit Morgan.
Or Planning Commission.
Oh, he was, he was also for this one as well.
I think those were the three and then these two.
Yeah. Okay, I'd make the motion appointing the Park and Art, the Park Arts Recreation and Culture Tax Committee members as presented in the packet.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. That would be a roll call vote. One question I have where Councilman Hewlett had to step out, where he's made this recommendation with me without requiring the vote. Okay, starting with councilman.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. unanimous, well, that motion carries. Okay, now going to number four, resolution, project selection for the 2019 municipal recreation grant.
Okay, we're in City Council. We have, we've come to you every year and ask for approval of a project to apply for, for the municipal recreation grant. This year, well, each year, we, we try to shift it around for the departments that are eligible for this funding. And so we've given it to parks and trails and Petit Need and the golf course and, and there's several of them that are, that would be able to use this money. And as we started looking through that list, we looked to see who's used it the most and who hasn't used it enough and what projects council members have brought up recently. And it happened to be that Councilwoman Carter had mentioned last council meeting, what about the, the restrooms at the golf course? And so it was on my mind. We brought it to the DRC, we talked about it. There was a couple of projects that, you know, we felt would be worthy, but, you know, working along with, with Dave, and I know I've had a chance to talk with Tracy, we feel like it would be good to apply for this funding to improve the restrooms at the, at Stan Golf Course. And some of the other projects will be considered in the future. This $10,000 will not pay the entire amount for, for these restrooms, but it does give us a good start. I believe that, I'm talking with Dave, I think we're looking at maybe applying for some of that park money, but that will be through an application process. It may or may not be funded. If it isn't, then, you know, we'd be looking at the general fund in order to address the remaining balance of those improvements. But felt it was a worthy project. I actually reached out to Utah County to see if it would be eligible and they did confirm it would be eligible. So we're looking for staff's, or for city councils' support to apply for the 2019 municipal recreation grant for the restroom facilities at Gladstand Golf Course.
Just my two cents with the, I think it's a very worthy project. We have a lot of people that are there and just as they were here and we've approached that here as far as the restroom's concerned, it's a good image to portray, to have a functional, good restroom for folks to use.
I think anytime we work on restrooms, because I read the study, so that's the first thing especially women look at to judge anything as by what the restrooms are like. So I started the women's restroom, make sure that gets done. Don't worry about the men's quite so much. Get the women's showering rather than.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
It sounds like one that Linda needs to make.
Okay, go.
It sounds like what?
The motion.
Your call.
Well, I brought it up. I, go ahead. I can't do it without Martha. Where is it?
Number four, move back.
Thank you. I'd like to, oh, thanks. I think they can hear me without. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resolution for the project selection for the 2019 municipal recreation grant for the restrooms at Gladstand Golf Course.
Okay, there's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motions are made, it's been seconded, roll call votes, starting with Councilman Hewlett.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to E, work session.